Recording in progress.
All right, I see Supervisor Lee, Supervisor Semidian, Supervisor Chavez. Jess, I need there's Vice President Ellenberg. We gotta be 12:40, there it is. All right, if there's no objection, let's go ahead and start our meeting and we're gonna turn right to Chris Chaffee and Melanie.
Would you like a?
Roll call vote, please, Jess, don't interrupt me. I wanted to do a roll call vote. I don't know. I don't know what you would suggest, but I want a roll call vote.
Sincere, sincere apologies. Supervisor Lee.
Present.
Supervisor Chavez.
Here.
Supervisor Semidian.
Here.
Vice President Ellenberg.
Yeah, I'm here.
President Wasserman.
Here. Thank you. Thank you very much, Jess. Chris.
Um, thank you for having me back to correct my error from before. I want to just say that your staff is impeccable and provided you with all the right data. All the numbers are correct. It was my error. I really apologize for causing the confusion. As your, we just, your DRA consultant, Matt Bretto, said, District Three and the formation of the 9195 map is of working section two seat is in full compliance of the Federal Voting Rights Act and is at a 50.6 agency that.
Thank you very much and shout out for MJP. Thank you, Melanie. All right. With that, we will move off of eight. We're not gonna hit nine yet. We'll do that in 20 minutes because it's no sooner than one o'clock for our public health official. 10 was on consent, 11 was on consent, 12, we took care of just before the break. Item 13, receiving considered nominations for Vice Board President and Vice President for the calendar year 2022. And with that, Supervisor Semidian and Supervisor Chavez.
Ready to make a nomination for Board President, if that is the appropriate motion at this time.
Yes, sir, it is. Thank you.
Then I would like to nominate Mike Wasserman to serve as Board Chair once again in the coming year. We have gotten ourselves on a good two-year cycle again, and there's a lot I could say about why I wanted to offer the nomination. But I think what I'd like to focus on, and I think it's something that will resonate with each and every one of our board members, is the civility with which you preside over these often challenging meetings, Mr. Wasserman. We take a look at what happens at a national level and sometimes shake our heads in dismay and even disbelief. It's gotten beyond course to a point where it's a really a genuine subjective concern, I think, as to whether or not people of goodwill can have their disagreements and still move forward in common cause. And I have just watched and appreciated the way in which you treat each member of our board, but perhaps more importantly, each member of the staff and the county population, the 2 million folks that we serve, with respect, courtesy, and dignity in every occasion, even when that is sometimes difficult. So if I had to highlight something that I am so pleased to see in a presiding officer, that would be it, and it pleases me to nominate you for a second year as Board Chair. Thank you.
And I'm happy to second that for all the reasons that Supervisor Semidian just said. Thank you for your equanimity and your kindness and your inclusiveness in terms of engaging the board. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. I'm honored. Any other comments or suggestions from Supervisor Lee or Vice President Ellenberg? If none, Jess, please call for the vote.
Supervisor Lee.
Hi.
Supervisor Chavez.
Yes.
Supervisor Semidian.
Hi.
Vice President Ellenberg.
Yes.
President Wasserman.
Yes, as well. Thank, thank you very much for the, the honor and compliments. With that, we move on to item number 14, adopting a resolution in support of reproductive freedom.
Before we do so.
Vice Chair nominate.
I'm sorry. Yes, we do. I'm a little I moved.
I would like enthusiastically nominate Supervisor Ellenberg for her second here, and I, I am, I just wanted to say I so appreciate that Supervisor Ellenberg has just played a leadership role in so many different areas, comes very well prepared for the meetings, so excited to nominate you.
I'll say again.
He beat me to it. Supervisor Lee, the second, and Vice President Ellenberg, I apologize for my flaw there. I was just moved and lost myself a little bit. Supervisor Semidian, you have an additional comment?
Just to clarify that, I believe as a process matter, what we're voting to do today is put the nominations in place and that we will in fact have a formal vote. Although I have to say if there's only one candidate for each or one nominee for each position, it looks, it looks pretty good. But I just, I didn't want that to be misunderstood or misconstrued or misreported after today's meeting because I know you know, Mr. Chairman, we have to come back and do this again in January.
Yes, yes, we do. Thank you. Considered nominations. So we have a motion by Chavez, a second by Lee. I don't see any additional comment. Jess, would you please take a roll call vote?
Supervisor Lee.
Hi.
Supervisor Chavez.
Yes.
Supervisor Semidian.
Hi.
Vice President Ellenberg.
Yes.
President Wasserman.
Yes, as well. Thank you. Thank you very much. And congratulations, Vice President Ellenberg, as well, to your nomination. We'll, we'll see on the next vote.
And congratulations to you on yours.
Thank you very much. All right, and with that, we've got, we'll keep moving here. Item 14, adopt resolution supportive reproductive freedom, referral brought forth by Supervisor Semidian, Supervisor Semidian.
Thank you. I will speak just briefly on this item, Mr. Chair. I think you and my colleagues will probably be aware of the fact that I am generally somewhat reticent about introducing resolutions. I do, however, think there is a time and a place when you just need to say so, and I think this is one of those times. For almost 50 years now, we have expected that reproductive freedoms are, or would be protected by virtue of the US Supreme Court decision in Roe versus Wade and subsequent cases relying on wait Roe versus Wade. Obviously, had not, did not have a crystal ball when put this in the hopper, but I think it's pretty clear from the oral arguments just this past week at the Supreme Court that those of us who see these reproductive rights as really essential and see them as essential, not just as an important abstract notion of reproductive freedom, but as a day-to-day imperative in terms of the healthcare work that we do at the county now can no longer rely on Roe the way we once thought we could. And what that means is that we're gonna have to count on states, localities, and perhaps our other branches of government beyond the judiciary, the Congress and the executive branch to safeguard those rights as we go forward. I won't repeat all of the language of the lengthy resolution, but I think it's a time when each of us is sort of called to stand up and speak out and push back on what we've been seeing and hearing of late, and with that, I would respectfully ask for an I vote and would move approval.
Second Chavez.
Second by Chavez, thank you. And with that, let's go, Vice President Ellenberg, you want to make a comment? And then we've got a few speakers.
Sure, just I want to express appreciation to Supervisor Semidian for bringing this forward and particularly for using really inclusive language in the, in the language of the resolution. I think we, we have come a long way, yeah, even since they, the first days of Roe and acknowledging non-binary genders and people who might become pregnant who don't necessarily identify themselves as women, I, I thought would be an important element and was really gratified to see that language included in your resolution. So thank you for that.
Thank you. My, my wife and I have been pro-choice advocates as long as I can remember. Supervisor Lee.
Yes, thank you. I just want to thank Supervisor Semidian for bringing this resolution forward. As a father of three daughters, it's important to me that all our girls grow up in the community that uplifts them in equal value as rights of women. While this important rights protecting women's being attacked in states across our country, we must affirm that Santa Clara County values reproductive freedom. This is a right to access to safe and legal abortion. It's a public health concern. This is a medical procedure, abortion medical procedure, that's extremely difficult decision for anyone to make. This is something that may be the right decision for certain people, but they absolutely need to be given all the correct information available. In our county, we put our money where our mouth is. We have the second largest public healthcare system in the state, providing care, including family planning services to everyone, regardless of their ability to pay. I'm proud to support this resolution to show that our county will always protect all women's right for free choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. I agree. All right, with that, we'll turn to a couple of speakers that we have, Jess. Let's give them two minutes each.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Diana Zamora Marroquin. You'll have two minutes. Please go ahead.
Sorry, I'm trying to minimize my screen here. Shoot, sorry about this. I have my talking point set up somewhere.
Your honor.
Uh, sorry. There you go. Hi, my name is Diana Zamora Marroquin, and I serve as the Director of Public Affairs for Planned Parenthood in Armonte, which is the largest affiliate in the nation. I'd like to say, start by thanking Supervisor Semidian for bringing the resolution before the Board of Supervisors today. We know you have a busy agenda, and so we chose to minimize the number of speakers before you, but know that had requested that our supporters join us, there had been numerous speakers encouraging you to vote in favor of the resolution before you. Our nation is facing a methodical and frightening attack on reproductive rights. Laws that protect our reproductive freedoms as prescribed by Roe versus Wade are in jeopardy of being overturned. And while other states and communities continue to mobilize against reproductive freedom, California has remained committed to building a comprehensive system of support for those seeking sexual and reproductive care. Like California, the county has a history of providing and protecting access to reproductive healthcare. From voting to allocate nearly $500,000 to replace Title X funding to running a healthcare provider with a 100% open door policy that includes comprehensive family planning services to all, regardless of their ability to pay. With the passage of the resolution before you today, Santa Clara County will continue to serve as a model for what counties can do to support access to reproductive healthcare and freedom. Moreover, because reproductive freedom is intertwined with many issues of social justice, this ensures that everyone who lives in the county will have access to the care they need. I urge the Board to reaffirm the county's longstanding position as a champion and defender of reproductive healthcare and support this resolution. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paul Soto. You'll have two minutes to speak. Please go ahead. Paul Soto, you're on mute. Oh, I think you had it, and then I muted you. Try to unmute one more time.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. I'd like to talk about the responsibility that we have. We're gonna have this discussion on sign resolutions that we need to discuss the consequences that can flow from this decision. Now, growing up, there was two of my homeboys that were crying and weeping because they wanted the child. These are men, okay, in our community, and they wanted the child, but because the woman is the, is the sole arbiter as to whether or not he has reproductive rights, that she was able to make a decision that he had to live with the rest of his life. Okay, and I think that it's irresponsible for us as a community in terms of what values are we setting forth, that we, that we respect that, that we honor that, and that we talk about that openly. That's what these forums are for, is to bring up these issues. Yes, they are controversial. You know, you don't have to tell me I'm Chicano. They were taking away my women's reproductive rights in Mount, uh, Mount Sinai Hospital in Los Angeles during the 1960s and 70s. Because these are farm workers. These are, these are, these are peasant Mexican women, and we're gonna have this eugenics program, and we don't want those kind reproducing. You know, we need to talk about that, you know, but, but, you know, obviously in polite company, people don't like feeling uncomfortable. You need to feel uncomfortable because it's been uncomfortable living as a Chicano in this society. It's been uncomfortable being a Chicano, having to, 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 to work in a system that has designed itself in order to deprive the Chicano of exercising power. And there was no more powerlessness that you can come up with than those women that were taken, those reproductive rights were taken from them in Mount Sinai Hospital in the 1960s and 70s. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jay Guzman. I've unmuted you. You'll have two minutes. Please go ahead.
Hello, and thank you for hearing my public comment. My name is Jay Guzman, and I'm an organizer with Planned Parenthood Advocates Armonte and a proud member of Alliance for Girls. I'm calling on behalf of both organizations in support of the reproductive freedom resolution that was put forward by County Supervisor Semiden's office. This year alone, government bodies across the nation have posed over 560 anti-reproductive rights, 83 of which were enacted, including several abortion bans. Healthcare legislation, when restrictive, has the power to gravely harm the health of all communities, especially the lives of our Black Indigenous people of color. With several abortion restriction cases on the SCOTUS docket awaiting a ruling, it goes without saying that this continues to be a tumultuous year for the reproductive rights movement. Therefore, it is with great pride that I call today in support of the resolution. I am proud to live in a county that chooses to trust their constituents to make informed decisions about their own bodies and lives without government interference. Thank you, Board, for your leadership.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Urvish Kumar Mehta. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much to all the Board of Supervisors and as well as the respective city staff, okay, and the county staff with regards to the item number 14 on the agenda. We are in, we are in an era where, where not just the technology, but the medical sciences have improved a lot. When we are talking about the genomics, when we are talking about the reproduction, when we are talking about the childbirth, there are ways that the women, and so would be the men, can be for with the different reproductive system that could, that could avail to give, give the birth to a child. However, with the, with the, with the Reproductive Freedom Act, which stands for the people to make a decision whether they are best for their lives and families to thrive and build the communities or with the dignity and equality. However, it is important that when the act is being implemented, that act be remain be consistent with the man and women and as well as within the rights of reproductiveness. Though the Reproductive Freedom Act still has certain limited, uh, has established the, the Reproductive Freedom Act explicitly to ensure the right to make their own personal health decision when it comes to the birth control and pregnancy related. However, it should not be just limited to giving the birth to a child or, or taking care of a pregnancy, pregnancy related or including the abortion. So should be the case with the man and women where the act, the development of the act or the amendment of the act by implementing the ordinance within the county be applied and making a jurisdiction where the man and woman gets the equal rights, even in terms of a genetically reproducing or doing the portion with, with respect to the.
Our next speaker is Halima Barucha. You'll have two minutes. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Halima Barucha. I'm the advocacy director at Alliance for Girls, and I'm calling to support the reproductive freedom resolution that was put forward by County Supervisor Semiden. This year alone, the government, you know, there's, there's been proposed anti-reproductive rights bills. 83 of, of the 560 have been enacted, including several abortion bans. Healthcare legislation, when restrictive, has the power to gravely harm the health of all communities, especially the lives of our Black Indigenous and people of color. With several abortion restriction cases on the SCOTUS docket and a conservative majority, it goes without saying then that this continues to be a difficult year for the reproductive rights movement. So therefore, I'm calling in, you know, huge support in, on behalf of Alliance for Girls on this resolution. I'm proud of the county for choosing to move forward with bringing this resolution forward and supporting this, and I think the Board of Supervisors for their leadership.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion, a second public comment has been taken. Supervisor Lee, your hand is still up. Did you have additional comments before the vote?
No, I just want to say I'm so glad to be in Santa Clara County with these colleagues of ours, and this is such an important issue. I'm so glad that we are, I'm expecting unanimous, unanimous, strong vote to, to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. We've been the number one county in the world for at least the last 11 years. Okay. So let's call for a vote, please, Jess.
Supervisor Lee.
Yes.
Supervisor Chavez.
Yes.
Supervisor Semiden.
Hi.
Vice President Ellenberg.
Yes.
President Wasserman.
I as well. I'm gonna turn, Jeff and James, do you have your typical brief reports? If so, we'll knock those off and then we'll switch to the docs. I'll start with Jeff Smith. Dr. Smith, your report, brief one or a long one?
I think it's a fairly brief one. Needs some description.
I'll move ahead. Yep.
My report today refers to an attachment which I have placed on the agenda, which is an email string that all of the board members and myself have received from Alan Ruby, who is the prior personal attorney for Lori Smith. The email string relates to board action taken previously, that being the no confidence vote in the sheriff, and also request that packet of information be provided to the California Attorney General, the FPPC, the US Department of Justice, and the county grand jury, civil grand jury. These packets went out last week, I think on Friday. I wanted to express what our typical approach is to a request from an elected official, elected department head for outside representation in this particular situation. The sheriff was offered outside representation regarding the issues related to the report to the US Department of Justice and to the California Attorney General. However, an elected department head stands really in three positions. One is a function as a department head under which they need to comply with all the policies, procedures, and regulations related to their office of department head. One is their personal position as an individual, which involves campaign issues as well as personal behavior. And one as an independent elected official, which involves compliance with constitutional requirements. It's typical for us to represent through county council, department heads for any actions that are related to their effectuation of their department head function. It's also typical that any personal actions such as campaign-related issues are not the responsibility of the county to provide defense for. And with regard to their function as independent elected officials, it depends upon the particular issue that's being addressed, and that requires an analysis of the particular facts, because sometimes it indeed is true that the independent elected official has an interest different than the full board. Those are dealt with on a case-by-case basis. In this situation, as I mentioned, the sheriff was offered outside representation for the issues related to the DOG, DOJ, and the AG. If further information comes. If further information comes before us as staff, we will come to the board as needed for further action. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you for that informational report. James?
At the December 6, 2021 closed session by a four to zero vote with Supervisor Semidian absent, the board authorized the county to author an amicus letter in Chevron USA Incorporated versus County of Monterey, supporting the petition for review before the California Supreme Court. And if the court takes the case, to file or join an amicus brief. The case concerns the extent of local authority to regulate and prohibit certain land uses in contexts in which the stakeholder's regulatory or permitting authority. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, James. And Jess, before I switch back to item number nine, which was a time certain order than 1:00, which will be our report from Public Health Department. I show that when that's over, we're going to come back to 22 and then 32 and 34 to be held together and then 59. Is that what your records show, Jess?
I concur.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll turn things over to Dr. Cody, our Public Health Officer.
Thank you Supervisor Wasserman and members of the board. I'm Dr. Sarah Cody. I'm here with my colleague, Dr. Ahmad Kamal, and we will be providing you with the COVID update today. And I'll start out and then pass it back to Dr. Kamal and then we both be happy to answer questions. So first slide, please. This is always is just to ground us in where we are in the COVID-19 epidemic locally. And what you can see way over there to the right is that we had our fourth wave. We came down to a higher baseline. This was all driven by Delta. And now at the very end there, you can see that orange line, the seven-day rolling average is starting to tick up. And I want to note that we actually first saw signs of an increase in our wastewater surveillance. We're now seeing it in cases. It's also being seen just early signs in other parts of the Bay Area region as well. So we're going to be keeping a close eye on this, but we may be entering our fifth wave swell surge. We're waiting to see what that might be. As as I think I've, we've discussed in previous sessions, the deaths do lag the cases and our extraordinarily high vaccination rates have kept us safer and blunted the rise in deaths. We still did see a rise with the latest Delta surge. And you can see on this curve that they are beginning to subside. As of today, in our county, we've recorded a total of 1,918 deaths from COVID. Next slide. So now I just want to spend a couple of slides talking a little bit about the Omicron variant that's been very much top of mind recently. And I'll start with talking about what we do know. So just two weeks ago, we hadn't even heard of this variant. We were just thinking about Thanksgiving and Omicron was another Greek letter and we didn't know how to pronounce it. It wasn't detected until November 9th in Southern Africa and not reported until November 25th and then got its name on November 26th. But in just this very short period of time, it's now been documented in over 50 countries. Every continent they've won. And in the United States, so far, 18 states. And that was as of yesterday afternoon. There may have been some more states reporting that I've missed just as of today. So that's just to say that it's spreading very quickly. Some of the detections in the United States have been from returned travelers, but there's been many, many, many that are what we call community transmission. And that is no history of travel, but likely contact with someone else who at some point had traveled. So it's been detected in the Bay Area. I think it's just, I suspect that there's a dusting of it here already and it will just be a matter of time before we detect it here in Santa Clara County. So the other piece that we know about this new variant is that it has a lot of mutations, lots of mutations, more than any of the other variants of concern so far in this pandemic. And that's what has people worried and that's why it has earned a post as a variant of concern. It's mostly these huge numbers of of mutations. But I want to emphasize what's still unknown because I think there's still more unknown than known. And and these are the really key features that we're all eager to learn about and we just need some experience to know. The first is how easily does it spread? How transmissible is it? And it seems like it's probably more transmissible than even the Delta variant. But I want to emphasize that the robust evidence that we need to say absolutely it's more transmissible isn't quite put together yet. The second big question is how severe is the illness that it causes? And does it pose the same risk of long COVID? Those are also still unanswered questions. And then finally, what about the immunity that we've developed from vaccination or natural infection? Will that protect us from Omicron? And again, we don't know yet. The the evidence is still accumulating and we just don't have that information at this point in time. So we're also walking very closely to see whether this new Omicron variant will outcompete the Delta variant or not. And as we know, the Delta variant has, because of how easily it spreads, has had what we call the competitive advantage and it's really outcompeted all the other variants. And the vast majority of infections that we have now are from Delta. The next slide just shows you where Delta has been detected as of yesterday in the United States. And you can see that it's really across the country, east, west, north, south and middle.
And doctor, you meant Omicron, not Delta, correct?
Yeah, that's where that's where Omicron has been detected so far in the United States. Apologies. Thank you.
Sure.
So what do we recommend? I think that our top-line message is that yes, we have a new variant on the horizon. But right now, our solutions are the same. Our recommendations are the same. We know what to do to keep ourselves and our community safe and we must double down on doing them. And that's our multi-layered prevention strategy. Number one on that list, of course, is vaccination and boosters for everyone who's eligible. And eligibility is just depends on when you finish your primary series and whether it's been six months since an mRNA vaccine or two months for J and J. If that's the case, you're eligible. We urge you to get boosted. Second is masking. We still have our indoor mask mandate. We also recommend masking in an outdoor crowded setting. I want to emphasize not all masks are the same. And a good mask fit is important, that it's pinched around your nose, you don't have air escaping. And we know that there are some kind of masks that provide better protection than others. And we really encourage people to think about the type of use, the type of masks that they're wearing and that they have a good fit. And then the three other really important prevention strategies are testing, ventilation and distancing. And at this point in the pandemic, much of this, I think that our our community is quite well-educated and quite knowledgeable and experienced with COVID 20 months in. And different situations may require different layers of prevention. And it's a it's a matter of balancing the risks and the benefits in making those choices. And finally, I just want to acknowledge that we're still in uncertain times. Just when we think that we've got things kind of quieted down, there's another challenge around the corner. And we will, you know, meet the challenges. We've met every other challenge throughout this pandemic. And one of the challenges, of course, is living with uncertainty, but I think we've grown rather accustomed to that as well. So now I'm going to turn it over mostly to Dr. Kamal to give an update on vaccination in the county. And then we'll both be delighted to answer any questions. Dr. Kamal?
Thank you very much, Dr. Cody.
Thank you, Dr. Cody. Thank you and thank you, Board of Supervisors. So in terms of vaccinations, we have seen a plateau in our pediatric demand, but we continue our outreach efforts in conjunction in conjunction with the Office of Education and other partners. Our booster demand, on the other hand, remains quite high due to expanded eligibility, concerns about the Omicron variant and enhanced messaging by various partners. As a result, over the past two weeks, our county sites have added 2,000 more booster appointments per day. And we are now going to allow booking up to 17 days in advance at sites where slots are filling up quicker than others. We are also dynamically redistributing our appointment slots so that we match the availability to demand in terms of pediatric versus booster doses. For example, we have found, not surprisingly, that earlier in the day, there's more demand for boosters. And then after school hours on weekends, there's more demand for pediatric vaccinations. And so we're sort of redistributing and predicting when to do what types of shots. Next slide. As a result, I'm happy to report that our county remains one of the most heavily vaccinated populations in the country, if not the entire world. Among residents aged 12 and above, more than 90% are fully vaccinated. That's not just one shot that's fully vaccinated. We are also catching up with the 5 to 11 age group, which is currently slightly below that. In addition to being heavily vaccinated, we are also seeing, as you can see on the far right of the slide, we have been very heavily boosted as well with almost half a million booster shots being delivered, representing about one-third of everybody who is eligible for a booster. And as you remember, as Dr. Cody just said, boosters are recommended now for all adults above the age of 18, either six months after completion of the mRNA vaccine series or two months after the J and J series. Next slide. So this graph here shows the vaccination by week. And as you can see, once again, on the right side, there's an upswing starting in November and it's still continuing. The county health system, which includes our VMC clinics, our mass vaccination clinics and our mobile vaccination clinics, remains a major suppliers of vaccines. But we are seeing the retail pharmacies and other partners stepping it up. And we're going to give a little bit more information about that in a minute. In terms of race ethnicity, we still see Asians at the top being the most heavily vaccinated group. But among the rest of the population, we don't really see the extent of disparities that are seen in many other communities when it comes to Hispanic, Latino and African-American populations. And this is really a testament to some of the great outreach work being done in these communities and trying to get vaccinations to everybody. Next slide. This slide shows a ramp up in our mass vaccination sites. So we're continuing to ramp up whenever and wherever possible. Other than a very well-deserved break for our staff on Thanksgiving, we have seen in the last week and beyond, an increase in all of our sites and just trying to even add more wherever the infrastructure and staffing allow us to. So back in early November, we were looking at around 2,500 doses a day. And now that's well above 4,000. And I do expect that in this week and beyond, we're going to easily bust through 5,000 doses per day, just in our mass vaccination sites. Next slide. In terms of our booster uptake, we are actually seeing very good uptake by our residents. This slide shows uptake by region. As we can see that in men, in all parts of the county, we have about 30% of everyone who's eligible having gotten a booster. And we are continuing to see robust demand for that, which is great. Next slide. Just to give a more detail on vaccination by provider, over here, we can see who provided vaccinations in the month of November to people who live in Santa Clara County. And as you can see, the county system, which includes the county health clinics, which includes the mass vaccination clinics and importantly also includes the mobile vaccination clinics, which operated just in the month of November, more than 130 sites. And since the beginning, have operated more than 1,000 sites, really trying to reach the most heartiest populations. And as a result, have really vaccinated groups who otherwise would not have access to any medical care. But the other thing to see here, we have seen that the other systems are stepping up to some degree. We can see Kaiser and especially the other retail pharmacies increasing their offerings and vaccinating more and more people. The big exception here is Paul Walter Medical Foundation, which given its reach in the county, still has quite low numbers and we're continuing to work with them. But it's important as we move towards living with COVID that we sort of can some part of regular healthcare delivery and the partners that we work with for flu vaccinations and other preventive care also take up the burden of providing COVID vaccines. Next slide. In terms of testing, we continue to see robust testing demand well above the state goal. We did see a little bit of a downtick in testing during Thanksgiving as people were away for holidays. But we are now seeing it back up and we continue despite increased demand to have thrown around times of around one day or less. Slide. And this slide also shows who is doing the testing. Once again, the county being the leader in testing as it always has been. But once again, Stanford especially and Kaiser to some degree coming up and still working with Paul Walter Medical Foundation. Next slide. And the last slide, I just want to talk a little bit about therapeutics, since we haven't talked about that in a while. We continue to allocate monoclonal antibodies. And as you recall, these are infusions that are given to people who are at high risk of severe disease. But at the time of treatment, have only mild to moderate disease with the idea being it can prevent them from being hospitalized or from having worse outcomes. So we continue to allocate those and since September have allocated more than 5,000 treatment courses and are trying to continue to increase utilization of that. In addition, we anticipate that malnupiravir, which is an oral agent, may be getting an emergency use authorization soon. And it's very encouraging because it's much easier to give than the IV infusion. However, we do also know it is not as effective. So we are going to continue to try to make infusions more available. And we also know that initial supplies will be quite limited and so we're planning a distribution strategy that will ensure rapid access for the population most likely to benefit from it. And with that, I am going to turn it over to you for.
I'm sorry, Dr. You faded off. You're going to turn it over to who?
We're welcoming your questions. That completes our presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I've got three questions, but we'll wait to the end. We do have a couple of members of the public. So Jess, let's hear from them first and we'll continue with our two minutes each.
Thank you. At two minutes, our first speaker is Paul Soto. I've unmuted you. Please go ahead.
Yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. Dr. Cody, it's a pleasure to be able to address you directly. As a sixth-generation Chicano that that whose whose parents grew up in Sasi Pues in the 1940s, 50s and 60s, I want to thank you for the challenges that you have faced personally with respect to the pushback from certain segments of our of our community with respect to the decision that you had to make. And it was an absolute decision that you had to make and you and you stuck by that and 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 I respect that. With respect to what you had stated, though, about a year ago, you had stated that racism is a public health issue. Okay, and I can argue, I can argue if I had the time, that it is far more deadlier than COVID. It's killing people right now. And I'd like to know the place where I can go to get vaccinated for it. Because we need a vaccination for the racism that is infecting our community. And it's infecting it right now. It's in the maps, it's in the language, it's in the policies, it's all over the place. You know, and and I don't have some kind of sanitizer to put on my hands, you know, to do that. The only thing I can do is The only thing I can do is not patronize Willow Glen or the Rose Garden. You know, those are the only ways, but they still want to infect my community with their policies, with their rhetoric, and thinking that they are on par with the legacy that I carry. And I carry that, and I carry it boldly, and I carry it confidently, because I know where I'm coming from. So as a health professional in charge of the health of my city, of my county, I would like to start having those conversations with you publicly, openly, about what it is that you are doing to fight racism, the infection.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Linda Edwards. You'll have two minutes. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. 20 months ago, you asked us to shut down our society, to flatten the curve, to save our healthcare system, and we did, negatively impacting so many people's jobs and businesses. But we did it because you said it was for the greater good. Then you asked us to endure more lockdowns and restrictions to reach herd immunity to save the elderly and immunocompromised. But now, after looking at data from around the world, we know that there will be no herd immunity, because these vaccines do not provide immunity, they do not stop person-to-person transmission, and their effectiveness against severe disease wanes within mere months, requiring never-ending boosters. It doesn't matter if it's the Delta variant, Omicron, or Xanadu. We will continue to have variant after variant after variant after variant. It is now time to treat COVID like the endemic virus that it is, just like the seasonal flu. We have to learn to live with it. Stop focusing on COVID case counts, which we know from past experience are inaccurate with faulty PCR tests and many false positives. Instead, we need to focus on hospitalization rates and deaths. Both of those rates are low in our county. Let's talk about early-in-home treatment cases like they're doing in other countries. Let's get IV monoclonal antibody treatment clinics like they're doing in other states. Let's get widespread antibody testing to see what our natural immunity rates are. With over 152,000 recorded positive COVID cases, we should be around 3/4 of a million people in our county with robust and long-lasting immunity, able to fight off all 28 of the virus proteins, not just the one spike protein. That's one-third of our county with natural immunity that protects them and all of us. If we work together, we can find a way to live with this virus. Let's figure it out rather sooner rather than later. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Kristi C. Please go ahead.
Yes, hi. Why are we continuing to push these COVID shots, even though they've been proven not to prevent the spread of COVID nor immunize individuals safe from the sort of disease? We've been socially distanced and masked for almost two years. Vaccines have been available for one year. Rates in Santa Clara County for 12 and over are above 90%. Everyone 5 and over is at 83%, yet we're still experiencing waves. The CDC defines herd immunity as reaching between 70 and 90% immunity. If herd immunity was to be reached, we were there, yet we're not immune. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. I have to point out, the policies in Santa Clara County, supported by this board and by Dr. Cody, meet that definition. Let's try something different. I don't know, early intervention, ivermectin, something like that. We now discover these shots are deadly and do not prevent the spread of the disease. Pfizer knew their shot was deadly in the first three months of the rollout, yet they continued to push their shot. I've emailed all of you the most recent document that was released through the magic of litigation and the FOIA request. It's called the Smoking Gun Document from Pfizer. It's come to light, it is in all of your inboxes. This is very damaging. In short, the document describes Pfizer's adverse reactions from just the first three months of the company's vaccine rollout, 42,000 adverse events, 1,200 deaths. In a normal world, this program would have been halted immediately and these pulled from the market, yet it has not happened. The FDA still moved forward with approval. This report is in your inboxes. I highly encourage you to read it, because you guys are all now on notice. You know that this that these shots are deadly. You are still shooting people full of this deadly thing at the county vaccination sites, and you guys can be held accountable. Thank you much for your time.
Our next speaker is Lawwanda Avila. Please go ahead.
Hi. I have recently lost my job. I was categorized as a high-risk category for my job. However, I literally work in an office with just two other people, two other staff members. I've worn a mask, I've tested every week, every result has been negative, yet I was given a letter October 19th saying that I'm losing my job literally by November 1st. I've lost my income, I've lost my health insurance for my family, and I am not getting any job placement assistance from the county whatsoever. All I'm told is these risk categories were based on guidelines from the Public Health Department. I am not getting a clear answer on what these guidelines are. Nobody can help me. I've talked to the county council, I've talked to Labor Relations, talked to Human Resources, I've talked to the EOD, my managers, and nobody is giving me clear guidelines, and I have lost my income over this, yet I am not a high-risk employee. I literally work in an office with two other people. I do not interface with the public at all. So I would like some answers on why I'm losing my income and my family is losing their health insurance.
Our next speaker is Sylvia Bickler. Please go ahead.
Hello, I'm Sylvia Bichler. I am not vaccinated. I have a religious exemption at my workplace. My granddaughter, I'm the legal guardian of my granddaughter, a ninth-class freshman high school student. She's also not vaccinated. I would like to ask you all to work together instead of alienating vaccinated against the unvaccinated. I think it's proven that this COVID vaccine does not protect against distributing the virus, nor does it protect to getting it. It might protect, in some people's mind, the most serious, let's say, deaths or more serious illness. And I think it's to every individual themselves to decide whether they want to get vaccinated or not. Being forced into a vaccination, especially a five-year-old, and then getting lifelong booster shots for a vaccine that doesn't work, is not acceptable to me, and my granddaughter gets bullied in school, you know? You have a big program against bullying, but you are the biggest bully of all by alienating the unvaccinated students from the vaccinated. It's so far, we heard from kids where teachers asked the kids to raise their hands, and then those who are not vaccinated, the kids get told not to play with the kids who are not vaccinated. Shame on you all for creating this discrepancy in the society. My granddaughter is Hispanic, and as I agree, it's also a form of racism what you do. It's the vaccination racism. I agree with Paul Soto, and shame on you what you currently do, because nothing of that helps to conquer that virus. Instead, we should work to-
Our next speaker is Enough Is Enough. Please go ahead.
First of all, we know, and you know, this isn't about health whatsoever. This is about keeping a lockstep with your agenda. You have instilled fear in the masses with your misinformation and propaganda. You are bought and paid for political whores, and I understand why you're doing Zooms. You're too busy bending over, grabbing your ankles. Health and science, health and safety, following science are nothing but slogans. You have nothing to back it up. Don't pretend to be offended. Be honest for once in your miserable lives, your lying lives. You are Nazis, following the Nazi handbook, different century, same ideology. The vaccines are killing people. They're not even vaccines. You had to change the definition of a vaccine to fit your narrative. Everything you're doing, you're changing to fit your narrative. You are disgusting, and I can't, I don't get it. You have children? How do you possibly teach them right from wrong? You're too busy grabbing your God-blessed ankles.
Our next speaker is Danette. Please go ahead. Danette, I see your microphone is on, and that-
Hello.
Go ahead, there might be some bandwidth issues.
Can you hear me?
It looks like there's a big lag.
Let's go to the next one, Jess.
Okay. Our next speaker is Bee Beekman. You'll have two minutes. Please go ahead.
Hi, Blair Beekman. I'm a little late to this item. I'm assuming you're talking about the COVID issues and the vaccine process that you're working on at this time. Correct me if I'm wrong. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I wanted to try to quickly offer, you know, I've been trying to learn to practice words for public comment time, that, you know, we're starting to bring the vaccine process to young people at this time, and I imagine, you know, you're learning some important ways to speak to them about it, about why you feel it's needed, and why parents may feel it should be needed for them. I hope that process can eventually filter back to kind of just our regular mass media and social conscious about how to better talk about the future of the vaccine process, and what exactly are lifestyle choices that we are choosing, and what's around us, and why we're choosing the vaccine process. I think you're explaining that to kids now. I hope you can learn to better explain that to ourselves, you know, everyday society as the next stages of the vaccine process. More people are going to have to be vaccinated, yet I think we should have more of the facts to understand what our choices are better, and that should be a more open, clear process. Learning how to do that, and all that we have to be, that the future of this process will be about for ourselves, has to be more clear, and that's the only way we can grow as a society in our future. We can't just hide these, this sort of information and work and efforts. You know my feelings about open public policies with technology. It can really help facilitate a neutral conversation for all sides about this sort of subject matter. Good luck how we can talk about this, continue to better talk about the vaccine process in our future. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Desiree Newzy. Desiree, please go ahead.
Hi. I'm also in the same situation as Lawwanda, in that I had a reasonable, I'm sorry, a religious exemption that was approved, but then later told that I was considered a high-risk position and had been forced on unpaid admin leave as of November 1st, with the supposed idea that we were supposed to receive, you know, help for reasonable accommodations, which we are not, and in fact, are being treated differently than those who are, have a medical exemption. My main question, though, at this point, is really what is the criteria for the high, medium, and low risks? We have asked this question on multiple levels with multiple entities within the county. There have been facts from the county that have been sent out that do not specifically answer this question. They, instead, we get these global answers, such as we are following the public health guidelines. Nowhere in public health guidelines or CDC guidelines do they mention these high-risk, medium-risk, and low-risk tiers and specific criteria. I, too, also work in an office with three other people. I do not carry a client caseload, and I do not interface with the public, and there also seems to be a disparity within different departments regarding tiers. Anesthesiologists, ER nurses, and other people that do interface with the public at a higher rate than I do, that have been categorized as medium risk. There's no policy or procedure that I have yet to be seen from the county regarding these risks, and that is really the answer that I'm looking for. What is the criteria within these risks? Thank you.
Our next speaker is RC Moreno, 28, at Yahoo. Please go ahead.
Yes, hi. I'm not sure if you can hear me, but I'm also in the same predicament as Desiree Newzy and Lawwanda Avila. We, I was placed on unpaid admin leave because I was considered high-risk, based on the Santa Clara County tiers, which no one else has. Other employers throughout the county only require that you test two times a week and you wear an N95 mask. The Santa Clara County has made these tiers up, which no one knows of, because I've been emailing, along with my union representative, everyone, from upper management to the CEO, Jeff Smith, to my own behavioral health, Sherry Terrell, everyone and anyone possible I've reached out to. No information has been given on these made-up tiers, other than high risk is when you interface with the public, which I do not at all. And there's other people working in the county that have been provisionally approved and are able to work with the N95 mask and the two times-a-week testing. So my question is, who made up the tier system, and what does it conclude if, again, COVID vaccines are still not reliable? People still get infected, and they still continue to pass it on to everyone? So that's my question. Who came up with the tiers? And we need just clear transparency from everyone. At the very top, literally, everyone knows, everyone's been involved in this, but no one is providing the information that myself or my coworkers need. I'm on unpaid admin leave, exhausted all my personal banks, all because of this tier system, which doesn't make any sense that the county has made up and doesn't work.
Our next speaker is Lan. You'll have two minutes. Please go ahead.
Hi. Dr. Jessica Rose's in-depth analysis of the CDC and the VAERS system, reporting system. She said that there was an increase of 13,073% in adverse reactions following the COVID shots, 5,427% increase in deaths following the COVID shots compared to all other vaccines given for the past 10 years. Now, one of the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors asked Sarah Cody in June 30th of this year in a meeting, saying that, asking her to comment on the vaccine safety issues, and Sarah Cody says that, well, you know, one of the problems with this vaccine rollout is the misinformation that is out there. Well, how many of those deaths is there misinformation? Either you're dead or you're not. So my question is, why aren't you, the Board of Supervisors and other people in charge, why aren't you questioning Sarah Cody? Why doesn't she know about all these VAERS data information that's so horrific? The public health officials should be monitoring and be concerned about all these data, especially in the midst of a pandemic. The CDC and the FDA, they're supposed to be doing this type of safety data analysis promptly and remove these EUA products that are killing and harming so many people. It is your responsibility to hold them accountable and for making sure that they report the prompt safety data. Why aren't you guys holding them accountable for this? You're listening to the CDC and the FDA, but they're not even doing anything about safety. So if you want to lead, be a leader and start doing your job. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bobby. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Bobby Ninkirk. I'm also an emergency room nurse who has been put on leave. My question is, how come the nurses aren't being told on how to report these complications? I mean, I've had patients come in in cardiac arrest, 40-year-olds with no prior history, within 48 hours of getting the vaccine. I've had three patients have miscarriages within 72 hours of receiving the vaccination, and I've never once been told to report to VAERS. Also, I wanted to know how many healthcare workers are out on leave? The CNO, Jill Sprow, reports that there will be no mandate for vaccinated staff to be tested, yet Dr. Sarah Cody reports testing is important. So I just want to know, are we going to be testing the healthcare workers that are working still? How many COVID patients do we even have in the hospitals right now? I know that the vaccinations are keeping people out of the ICU, but yet we're still getting a lot of people coming in by walk-in or by ambulance, because they need assistance after receiving the vaccination and after complications. It's affecting our quality of life. I think that we need to have some more nursing informatics, people step up. We need to talk about, you know, how many people are being admitted that are vaccinated? How many people are being admitted that are unvaccinated? What are their symptoms? What are we doing to help them? Because I don't think that we're assisting the symptoms as much as we need to, and the nurses that are working, they're understaffed, you know, they need help, they're working extra-long hours. Why can't we just return back to work and be tested twice weekly as we were previously, wear the N95 all the time, and I'm not even allowed in the break room, and that's fine? But like everybody else says, you guys are creating a huge boundary between the vaccinated and the unvaccinated. You're creating more problems when we just should be looking at the statistics and what's really going on. This is a virus. We need to treat our symptoms and move on. Thank you.
And we'll try Danette again. Danette, go ahead.
Thank you for giving me another opportunity here.
Thank you for giving me another opportunity here. So I've worked for the county for 24 years in health and hospital. I'm a well-respected employee. And I was placed on administrative leave. Sorry. I think that nobody is talking about the impact of this on a person's personal life. I've built a career. I've been a person who's gone the extra mile. I'm kind. And I am passionate about my population that I work with. I, I have loved my career there, only to be called and out of the blue with three minutes of notice and placed on leave. It's despicable. There is no evidence. There's nobody around me. And I know a lot of people who agree that this tier system that was created out of the blue is accurate or beneficial in any way to protect people. Whereas the CDC guidelines show the effectiveness of an N95. Add the shield, add twice-weekly testing. It's effective. I worked for six months on the COVID unit at DePaul. At that point, apparently, an N95 was safe. There was no indication or anything that anybody was spreading anything. This is safe, and I think it's despicable that we are taking away people's livelihoods. I might lose my home. And I think it's a terrible thing that you're letting this go through. The tier system is ridiculous. It was made up out of the blue. And as other people have said, we cannot get definitions of the tiers, nor can we find what standard that they base the tiers on to create them in the first place. It's not right. It's not fair, and you should address this. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Stop. I've unmuted you. Please go ahead.
Fear and more fear. I'm so disappointed with our so-called health officials and our Board of Supervisors. You all stood by and allowed this to continue and to get so far out of hand. I cannot believe how far you have taken this. We are now into this two years later. You are all advocates for discrimination. We now know that these vaccines are not safe and effective, and yet you still peddle them as they are. We know that the vaccinated can still touch and transmit the virus, and yet we're creating these two-tiered societies? Where do you come up with this? You guys are disgraceful human beings. You need to change this right now.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Jess. I appreciate that. And I know administration staff were taking notes as that was all being expressed. With that, I'm going to turn to my fellow supervisors on the board with any questions. I have three, but I'll save those till last. Supervisors, any questions you have of our doctors? Supervisor Chavez.
Thank you, and thank you to all the speakers who came forward. I wanted to ask, start with kind of the end question about the, just broadly, the approach relative to reasonable accommodation. If one of the staff can just give us an overview on the, on the county's approach to this.
Yeah, I think I can do that. So we first did the process of requiring documentation of either vaccination or request for an exemption, either under the religious exemption criteria or medical exemption criteria. For those individuals who got vaccinated, there was no, that was just confirmed by the vaccination data. And they continued to work as normal. For those individuals who requested an exemption, we implemented the standard reasonable accommodation process, which means that there are many factors that are looked at in order to decide where they can safely work, if, if there is a place that they can safely work. It's an iterative process. It means that each individual is considered particular to their situation, having to do with what type of work they do, who they're around, what kind of position they fill, what are the surrounding circumstances. And this is a process that goes on for a significant period of time, because usually there's not a quick answer. So we established criteria in each department for each activity in each situation, in terms of risk associated with what they were doing for their normal job, and moved ahead in that way. It's very similar to the typical accommodation process that would happen if someone had a physical or mental disability, or someone who had a particular allergy or some other issue that related to their ability to do their normal job in the normal situation.
Dr. Smith, in order to address reasonable accommodation, can you remind me, is there one lead department that's leading that, or is each department managing this themselves?
It's done in cooperation with the individual department, Labor Relations, EOD, and County Council.
And is the lead agency EOD in these instances?
Yes.
And then as to the, the issue about determining risk levels, is there, in fact, a written guideline for how risk levels are being determined?
Yes, we have a written guideline.
By any chance, is that on a website?
No, we don't have it on website.
Okay. I, what I would like to request is that, that the, the board receive the, the outline for high, medium, low risk. I mean, not outline, but the, the tool being used to do that assessment and that it be posted, where, where employees could get it, which I assume would be our HR department's webpage. And, and just to better understand the, the reasonable, because I think that would help us understand the reasonable accommodation process, which I'm very interested in.
Okay.
And then the other questions I wanted to ask, and I'll just ask two, and if, if my colleagues don't ask my rest of my questions, I'll come back. But if I could ask doctors, Dr. Cody or Dr. Kamal this question, I'm very excited about the rate of, of acts, you know, how people are accessing the vaccine. And, and one of the things I've been a little concerned about is that last year I felt like we were a lot more coordinated relative to making sure that people could get the flu shot and the vaccine at the same time. And I was wondering if you could talk just a little bit about what plans are in place now to try to meet that need so folks don't have to go anywhere twice? And, yeah, and just to better understand sort of your thinking about the approach we're taking this year versus what we did last year.
Thank you, Supervisor. This is Dr. Cody. I can, if I can answer your question, and maybe Dr. Kamal can fill in if I missed something. At some clinics, at some times, we were able to offer both the COVID vaccine as well as the flu vaccine. And then as the demand for COVID vaccine increased, we had to make some trade-offs and some decisions. And offering both vaccines slowed things down so that we were not, would be less likely to be able to meet the booster demand. And so at some sites, to increase the throughput for COVID, we're not able to also offer the flu. So we'd sort of have a hybrid, a hybrid program, if you will.
Could you just outline flu season for us? Like, I, I remember, yeah, I just meant the dates, like, when we tell people you don't need to take, get a shot anymore. You know, I, I know there's a timeline.
Yeah. So flu season, as you may recall, is highly variable. We never know whether it's going to be a big season, a small season, or when it's going to peak. It can peak anywhere from November to March or early April. And so to bracket that, we generally recommend that people start getting their flu shot in September or October. And, and in many seasons, we recommend that people still get vaccinated if they've not been already, you know, well into early spring. So it's a pretty long, a pretty long season. And generally, flu vac, yeah, flu vaccine is offered in pharmacies, many healthcare providers have dedicated flu clinics, although I'm noticing less this season. So pharmacy, individual doctor offices, certainly the county offers flu vaccines in many, in many clinics. So there, there are many ways to, to access it.
So Dr. Cody, part of what's prompted my question is that sometime this year, we saw a hospital utilization. And one of the things I was really struck by was the low rate of people that we had in the hospitals based on having the flu. And I, and I recognize that we were in a different place in the, in the, in the process of getting people vaccinated, because last year we were giving people the flu vaccine prior to COVID, the vaccine being available robustly. So I do understand that there's a strain on resources. What I am a little bit concerned about is us not knowing the full implications of the Omicron virus relative to perhaps not having as robust a strategy relative to the flu shot and us having a convergence of, of need for hospital beds. And so, you know, I, I would be very interested in, in the near term, us increasing the amount of communication we're doing around the flu shot. And, and maybe, and Dr. Cody, partly speaking to you, but also to Dr. Smith, because I do, I do think that if we, if we haven't seen, and I don't know, Dr. Cody, for this flu season, what we anticipate the flu season peak to be. Do you know for this season?
No, as of now, we're not seeing a lot of influenza activity. It's still just sporadic. And I think it's impossible to know how, how the season will unfold. I, I hear you. We are concerned about influenza. We are concerned about COVID, and we're concerned about many, many other conditions as well. And as with COVID, you know, I like to think that we are all in this together with our healthcare system partners and pharmacies and all the deliverers of vaccine. So I think your point is we'll take in that the public very much needs to understand that flu, they need to get vaccinated and protect themselves from influenza as well as from COVID. We don't know what the flu season will look like, just as we don't know what, what this new variant will ultimately look like in terms of illness severity and impact on hospitals.
Got it. And I, I think, and I, I hear what you're saying also, that we're balancing a lot right now. And I, I really appreciate the point that you're raising about our healthcare partners. And that was actually going to be my last question. I, I would just like to say to, to all of our doctors that I would really like to emphasize that I think it's going to be really critical that, in addition to communicating about COVID vaccines, that we're also able to really highlight where people can get their flu shot. And I do appreciate your point that the, that we are relying on many parts of this, of the system, that it's not just the county. So I take that very seriously. And at the same time, I recognize that, you know, you all, the health and hospital team, and, you know, our public health team have really been driving, I think, the health leadership here. So I would be interested in just an off agenda about what we're doing around communication now and what we, what we're going to be doing, and frankly, how the board can help. The last question I just wanted to ask is, what does collaboration and cooperation look like with our other partners this go-around? And in particular, you know, we now have a much bigger task. We have more people that we're vaccinating and more people that we're doing the, you know, making sure people have access to the booster shot and trying to manage flu and, you know, many other things. What does that partnership look like? And when will the board have a full sense of the contributions of the system overall to addressing this next phase?
Well, thank you for that question. It's, it's, it's an ongoing conversation. And I think that clearly the health systems do have multiple, just like we do, they have multiple sort of balls in the air when it comes to staffing, when it comes to healthcare surge. But we have seen movement, I would say, in the last few months, and we're continuing to engage with them, trying to find partnerships and really trying to incorporate COVID care, as you sort of alluded to, into the sort of normal operations, the flu shots, the preventive visits, and so on and so forth. So it's no longer the scarf out, and clearly, I mean, COVID hit us like a ton of bricks, and so it made sense that we had to stand up this tremendous one-time response. But we're hopeful that, you know, as the months go along, we're going to see more and more incorporation of COVID care and COVID prevention into normal operations. And I will give you periodic updates on that.
I, I think in January, I would be very interested in seeing, just on a couple slides, what, who's playing a leadership role in providing support? Because I just think we have to be public about that. And A, and B, I do recognize the point you raised, Dr. Kamal, that's really critical around staffing and resources. But I don't want to go into what could be the peak of the flu season and not know what our partners are offering.
Understood, absolutely. And we'll cut that to you for the next report.
Thank you. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Supervisor Lee.
Yes, thank you, Chair President Wazerman. The, the biggest thing that we've heard in the last two weeks, of course, is this Omicron variant. And I guess so far, the good news is we still haven't had a diagnosed case in Santa Clara County, which probably doesn't mean that we don't have any. It's just that we haven't gotten detected yet. So we expect that there's probably something that we will find out sooner or later. Now, from what we've seen so far, the masking and then hands-washing practices certainly have reduced the number of flu transmission. And currently, right now, I just want to confirm, we still have our indoor face covering mandate? Is that correct?
Thank you, Supervisor Lee.
Yes.
Yes, the indoor masking mandate is going in place.
Okay. And now, when it comes to vaccines, again, we still don't have a definitive number to know whether the vaccines is strong or not with this new variant. On the other hand, the best recommendation I keep hearing from people is still the same thing, basically, is getting your vaccines and also your booster appointments, too. And I have received some concerns, some residents that are trying to get the booster vaccines and can't find a point within the week and might have to wait for a couple more weeks. So I know it was reported earlier, but can you repeat again, how many vaccine booster appointments do we have currently offered by the county versus the pharmacies? Because I know our partners have other pharmacies that's only been given a lot more vaccines or boosters as well, correct?
Yes, I'm going to ask Dr. Kamal to answer that, if he may have some numbers top of mind. But I just, I want to really underline that this is an effort shared by all. And that the county, we have gone broad, and we've gone deep, and we have run fast, and we have run long. But we do need help from healthcare systems and pharmacies. Dr. Kamal, do you have any of those figures top of mind?
Yeah, I think Dr. Smith is pulling up a slide. So this, yeah, so this is slide number 16, if you guys are seeing it, and it just sort of shows for the month of November. Oh, sorry. It's coming up now, I think.
Thank you. Now we have it, yes.
Great. So this just shows for the month of November, and so on the Y axis is the number of vaccines given in thousands. So as you can see, the county, which is Dr. Cody said, comprises the mass vaccination sites, the public health mobile vaccination, and the county clinic gave just over 120,000 doses of vaccine. And the next highest group was Kaiser, which gave about half that much. Now, this includes all vaccines given to Santa Clara County residents, and sometimes, especially And sometimes, especially with Stanford and Palo Alto Medical Foundation, their site may not be in the county, but we counted those as their vaccination. And so as you can see, it's clearly a huge difference. And I think if we were to move to normal operation, we would expect that Palo Alto Medical Foundation in particular would be much higher, given the fact that they provide medical care to a very large swath of our county. So that's sort of what we're seeing now. And we're hopeful that by January, when we come back with this, we're going to see improvement along those, those, those numbers.
Is it because of the logistic issues in terms of vaccination access? Or you think it's other reason for bottleneck like that?
No, I've, vaccines are plentiful at this point. It's no longer a supply issue. It's more just sort of allocating resources and staffing to this as a priority. And I think that's really what we're trying to push with all the health systems. And to some degree, I think we're victims of our own success because we have such a robust and convenient and easy vaccination program by the county. I think to some degree, the systems haven't sort of felt that need or urgency. And we'd like to encourage them to do that.
Great, thank you. Now, in terms of the outreach issues of the vaccines, what exactly are we doing in terms of improving the, improving this information to tell people? Are we sending out PSAs or other type of information to get out to the public on, on asking them to get a vaccine? Because I think a lot of people have that, I hate to say it, the false sense of security, thinking, I've been fully vaccinated. I don't need to worry about getting a booster. What have we been able to do to help educate that?
We still have a robust communications team and strategy to try to reach people in multiple ways and reach them where they're at. So it's a combination of social media, all outreach workers at all touch points, having the information to share with residents when they reach them, as well as some, you know, mass, more, more broad communication. But as much as we can throughout the pandemic, we have always endeavored to reach people in their language, in their community, to the, to the best that we can.
Right, great, thank you. The mix and match certainly has shown to provide just as strong protection, if not stronger. And it's currently now approved by CDC using different vaccines. Now, we talked about this, that the Johnson Johnson vaccine turns out to be so-called one and done, but has very fast-waning immunity on some of the stuff we're reading. Do we have any type of additional outreach now, since we do know who received the J and J vaccine regarding getting the boosters?
Um, I believe that we have done some outreach specific to J and J recipients. I think that Brian Darrow may have a little bit more information to offer, and so I'm going to pass that to him.
Thank you, Dr. Cody. Brian here. And so we did, we did a big push with all of the recipients of all kinds of vaccines who received their shot through the county health system. So that included a big push to over 40,000 J and J recipients, letting them know that they are eligible and recommended for the vaccine if they, if it's been two months since they got their shot. And so I know that was done via email, it was done via robo-call and via my help online for those who have that online portal, if they're a VMC patient.
Great, thank you. Do we at all keep track of the number of people who've gone J and J and still haven't received a booster yet? Do we keep track of those or not really? So that we could maybe do follow-up reminders?
Right, yeah. So everyone who got vaccinated through the county system is actually in our electronic health record. And we do have a record of everybody who got vaccinated with J and J, with Pfizer, with Moderna. And we actually have a module that we recently implemented in HealthLink, which allows us to message those people through multiple modalities as often as needed. And so certainly, we can continue to follow up on that.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we are doing that push to, to, to get the word out regarding the availability of boosters and why those are important. And then the, the other question is now talk about the, on slide 20, talk about the monoclonal antibody allocation. Do you think we have sufficient monoclonal antibody supply right now?
Um, yeah, so monoclonal antibody supply is definitely a moving target for the last, we get a weekly allocation that goes from the federal government to the state and then to the counties. And for the last few weeks, we have been getting an adequate supply. I think, you know, one of the issues with monoclonal antibodies also is that it is a fairly labor-intensive process of having infusions, of having scheduling. So I, at this point, I don't think supply is the rate-limiting factor. It's really having the health system stand up the capacity and getting the patients connected, which our CICP team works very closely with on.
Okay, great. And is there any plan of increasing any type of therapeutics? Since we are worried about, you know, the, the potential rise right now with the weather and also with the other variant coming to accounting?
Um, at this point, it's, it's too early to say if that's going to create a problem with therapeutics. I think that there, there is definitely going to be still efficacy regardless of which variant comes our way. And the other thing is that there are several new agents that are currently in various degrees of review and development by the FDA. So we anticipate in the next few months, there's going to be even more therapeutic options and maybe even oral agents that are more effective than what we're coming up with now.
Right. And those oral, those pills basically have not yet been fully approved, correct? I think one from
That's correct. Advisory Committee of the FDA met and narrowly recommended approval because it's not as effective as the monoclonal by any means. And the FDA itself has not yet issued an EUA, but we are planning if and when they do that, to have a distribution mechanism. So people, or appropriate fortune.
Right, exactly. And as far as distribution, certainly pills are far more easier to do than any other type of treatment. So, great. And that's all the questions I have. Thank you very, very much. This is very, very informative. Appreciate it.
You betcha. Supervisor Schumidian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for give the delay there on me. Dr. Smith, Dr. Cody, Dr. Kamal. I, I am wondering how we can create a greater sense of urgency and ramp up our delivery? And by our, I mean our county writ large on vaccination and boosters. We had a conversation almost four months ago on the basis of my referral on boosters and their pending arrival on the scene. So this is certainly not a new topic. It's one we've known we were going to have to wrestle with for many months. I'm hearing and experiencing firsthand as I access the system from time to time, just to do a ground check. The same thing that Supervisor Lee referenced, which is folks who are saying, look, I just can't get, I just can't get an appointment. And, you know, we're, we're, we're hearing again today, as we did four months ago, that supply isn't the problem, which was, you know, an understandable limitation in the early days of the vaccine. Dr. Kamal says he's optimistic that things will improve with some of our private or nonprofit public health partners, Pampf among them. But I'm not hearing any reason to be optimistic. This is, as I say, more than four months into the conversation. Dr. Smith, if I can turn to you directly, you know, because we talked about it last Wednesday, and thank you for taking the call and short notice. You know, I went and did a spot check and couldn't find any appointments available for a booster in the one site we have, the one county site we have in Mountain View. Couldn't find a, an appointment at Pampf when I called their call center. And they said they were unable to schedule through December, even though the conversation was taking place on December 1st, at any of three sites, by the way, in proximity to the North County area that I represent. And couldn't get an appointment at CVS in any of three different locations. Now, it sounds like that's the same experience that not only my constituents share with me, but that Supervisor Lee's constituents share. And I, I very much appreciate Supervisor Chavez's exhortation that we need to find out where things stand with our quote-unquote partners. But I, I don't think we can wait until, excuse me, till January. I mean, that's another month, and then we'll spend a month talking about it. And all of a sudden, it'll be six months into the booster effort, and we'll still be wondering why folks aren't stepping up. So, Dr. Smith, I'm, I'm looking at the presentation today from Dr. Cody and her team. Slide seven, what, what do we recommend? Vaccination and boosters. I'm hearing that there's not a supply shortage. And yet, as recently as a week ago, when, you know, an effort was made to see if they were available, the answer was no, no, and no, whether we went to our North County site to our principal North County provider or to the pharmacies that are supposed to be the, the backup to the backup. What, what, what do you, what do you think? What can we do to ramp it up a little and sooner rather than later?
Thank you, Supervisor. The, after we had our conversation, I looked into the details in more detail. And we expanded our availability at Mountain View by increasing the length of time before the vaccination appointment that we were releasing them to the public. So it used to be a week at a time. Each day, we'd update the availability. Now we're doing 17 days in advance. There are now, as I look at the, excuse me, the website right now, sites or appointments available. That's improved the situation. We also expanded our capacity in total in Mountain View by about 500. And so we're working on trying to deal with the logistics. It's not a vaccine supply issue. It's really a logistical issue with staffing. And so we're expanding our staffing in general. We're recalling the number of disaster service workers and increasing our utilization of registry staff across, throughout the county. I won't deny that we've had some problems with availability because what was happening is that when the appointments were released to the public, they were being snapped up rapidly. So they were gone in a matter of a few hours. We're trying to mediate that, ameliorate that by having a longer period of time where more appointments can be given and a longer wait time for the appointment. So we're trying to match the need to the resource. But you're right, we're scaling up and we need to have our partners participating. We've been trying to do it voluntarily. And as Dr. Kamal pointed out, not having the greatest results in the world. But I think everybody, all of our partners are interested in providing the support. And we also have, obviously, our community clinics providing support. We're expanding our mass vaccination sites. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, I, I appreciate it, but I, I guess I, I'm not, you know, I'm sorry, Dr. Smith and colleagues. I, I hate to be negative, but I, I just think the, the hard fact of the matter is we've got demand that is not being met. Is that a fair statement, Dr. Smith?
Well, I would say that there is clearly a need for more booster appointments available, yes. So we're trying to expand.
So what does it take, what does it take to get a Palo Alto Medical Foundation to provide more? If there's plenty of supply, if the science and the medicine tells us, as Dr. Cody has reminded us today, that the, you know, continuing best advice is to get more vaccination boosters out there, what does it take to get them to ramp up their efforts and any others who may be lagging? I mean, we, this is not our first conversation with these folks. We went through this around testing. And, you know, county staff was cautious, didn't want to, you know, push too hard. And months later, we still didn't have the testing that we needed. I mean, this is, you know, it's having the same conversation two months from now, which will make it six months after we started talking about boosters, is not a satisfactory outcome in my, in my view. And I think we would be hard pressed to tell the public it was a satisfactory outcome. So what do we do about it, other than be hopeful?
Hi Supervisor Schumidian, this is, this is, this is Dr. Cody. We, we hear you and we share your frustration. We clearly have demand for boosters that, that exceeds the available appointments. People can't get it as quickly as they would like. And at the same time, we're telling everyone, get it quickly. And I think you can also see from the data that we presented that the county has done double the number of doses of the next nearest partner. And so we are in a place where we need assistance figuring out what can we do to incentivize, energize and awaken our other partners who collectively serve our community and are responsible for many, many patients. So I think that is the challenge before us. I, I would note that in the county, you know, as in every system, we also have to balance our COVID response with our responsibilities to other parts of health and public health. And, and that's challenging too. So I know that, that the challenge that the healthcare delivery systems have, and that's the challenge that the county has. But I would say that the county, you know, just looking at the data, has, you know, delivered quite remarkably. So, so any assistance and any thoughts that you may have about how we can activate our partners, we would, we have the same goal in mind and, and we face the same challenge.
Well, thank you for that. I guess my view is, I, I, you know, having listened and learned, I hope, over this last year and a half, I, I have been struck by the importance that a matter of days, certainly weeks, but, but definitely not months, can make in terms of our ability to forestall an even more disconcerting outcome. And so, as I say, the notion that we might wait a couple of months and still find ourselves in the same place. Again, we, we knew if we were talking about six months after the initial vaccine, that since the vaccine started to ramp up in early 2021, that by this time, and we had this conversation in a board meeting, that by this time this year, we were going to need to be going full tilt on boosters. And yet, here we are, not going full tilt on boosters as a county small C, not a capital C, County of Santa Clara. And I, I guess I would ask, you know, Mr. Williams and Dr. Smith to put their heads together to find out what, if anything, we can do to compel a greater level of participation. If the answer is nothing, then let's know that and adjust. But as I say, right now, I don't have any reason to be optimistic. And I feel like we, as a small C county, the county writ large, are at risk of taking our foot off the gas. And I know it's hard to maintain a sense of urgency day after day for more than a year and a half. I, I know, you know, as I said previously, people want to just fall down in a heap. But, you know, I also know that we can't. You're telling us we can't. But, you know, continuing to tell people vaccine and booster is the solution. But by the way, whether you call the county or your private healthcare provider or a pharmacy, they don't have an appointment. That's not going to work. So I'll let it go at that. But Dr. Smith, I consider this priority number one. And because I, I think, you know, what we're seeing and hearing from folks out in the community is some COVID fatigue and their willingness to try and be a good community member. good community members and do the right thing is starting to wane. And if we find ourselves in a place where we're in a world of hurt because we weren't able to get people the vaccines and boosters that they needed on a timely basis, I'm not sure we're going to get the same level of cooperation that we did earlier in the pandemic. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Smitty.
Thank you so much. I'm going to shift us a little bit because I think my colleagues have thoroughly covered this part of the COVID report. And I want to ask a few questions about another area of COVID concern that wasn't touched on in the report today. I'm aware that custody health and the sheriff's office, public health and others collaborate regularly on COVID-19 prevention for the jail. And while we've done better for longer than many other jails, we do, of course, have a particular obligation to protect outbreaks in our jails, to protect those whose rights have been restricted, to protect our staff and the community at large. Considering the significant outbreak in late October spilling into November, what are the mechanisms in place for independent review of the COVID prevention and outbreak response activities in the jail, including addressing compliance relative to the various protocols that have been established?
I think I understand. The numbers right now in the jail are much improved from what they were a few weeks ago. We had, I think as of today, two new cases totaling up to, I think, about five total. We've been doing multidisciplinary reviews of all of the situations and cases involved, so.
Can you, that's what I want to know more about. Can you, can you describe? I mean, I've got the dashboards. I know what our case numbers are. I know that we've had outbreaks. So what I'm wanting to understand is each time there is an outbreak, how are we learning from it? Who's, who is part of this multidisciplinary team that is reviewing? And do they, are there specific suggestions or policy adjustments that come out of those reviews in order to do better each time going forward?
Every day, public health investigates and reports to EOC and staff any new cases. The public health department also sequences as necessary in order to evaluate where the cases came from. That is whether they actually came from the outside or from internal to the jail and to look at transmission patterns, if any, between inmates and staff. The multidisciplinary view continues with custody health and also with custody staff. The custody bureau keeps track of all of the correctional officers and employees who have exposures, risk or infections. We're still doing testing when necessary, usually PCR testing, but we're exploring antigen testing. With regard to the severe outcomes, as we all know, one inmate passed away from COVID. His review of his situation is going through review at the hospital in addition to the groups that I just mentioned and also at the medical examiner coroner's office. In addition to those reviews. So public health, custody health, custody itself, and the hospital are all involved in doing the review. And the data is collected daily and reported daily.
And do they include prevention activities or prevention guidance as part of the, the investigation? That's, that's what I'm looking, trying to get at as well. How are we learning and improving with each investigation?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I didn't catch that part. Yes, we have prevention policies and treatment policies in place. Every day those are reassessed based on what the findings are. So a lot of it boils down to making sure that there's compliance with prevention protocols. But also if necessary, the prevention protocols are changed. As illustrated by what we did when we had a large number of cases a few weeks ago. We had to move to a early release program where the DA, the public defender, custody help, custody and county execs office worked diligently to reduce the number of inmates by releasing low level offenders who were close to the end of their sentence as fast as we could. That helped us free up isolation space because, as you know, the facilities are not designed for isolation. So it's really challenging logistically to do that. So any new change that happens on a daily basis, we reevaluate policies, procedures and processes to make sure we're doing as effective a job as we possibly can.
Thanks so much for that. I know that this is a receive report item, but I'd like to make a motion, if that's necessary, to direct administration to report to the first PSJC meeting of 2022 with a presentation on the independent review of the COVID prevention activities and including a review of any in custody deaths that are related to the pandemic, please. Does that need a motion or is that direction sufficient on its own?
I think that motion is, is some, motion and vote is appropriate. And Dr. Smith, can you, can you make that?
Sorry Supervisor, you asked me a question.
Yes, I asked if you can make that motion as stated.
We can just do it.
You can just.
We can do it.
You will do it. Okay, thank you.
We'll do it.
Thank you so much.
I'll be happy to second the motion and thank you. Any other questions? Otherwise I've got a few for Dr. Cody. Okay, thank you. Doctors, thank you for your presentation. I, I really appreciate that. I've got three questions for you. One, a while back, we set three criteria. And I believe the third and final criteria we have yet to meet is the percentage of all Santa Clara County residents having been vaccinated. I think we're at a tremendous 78.6% as I see on your website. That's only surpassed by an incredible 83.7% of residents age five and over. And that's surpassed only by a magnificent 90.6% of residents age 12 and over with completed vaccinations. I love where we are and I'm, I would venture to guess we're the best percentage vaccinated of 2 million or more in the nation. What I'm asking about now is the third criteria to our going maskless. When we do hit 80%, is that still your intention?
Thank you Supervisor. I just want to review the three criteria to lift the indoor mask mandate. And we need to meet all three. So one of them is vaccinate the total population reaching 80% fully vaccinated. And as you noted, and I so appreciate your enthusiasm, we are closing in on that goal, which is phenomenal. But there's another metric that, which is the cases where we need to be at the CDC moderate for three consecutive weeks. And as I mentioned on that first slide.
Dr. Cody, I'm sorry. You said we have to be at the CDC what?
It's the yellow level or, or moderate, yellow and moderate, orange substantial, exactly. And we dipped into moderate a few times, but we've never stayed there for very long. And I am concerned that with this recent uptick that we will, it may be a little while before we're there for three consecutive weeks. And then the third metric was hospitalizations being low and stable because we want to ensure that our healthcare delivery system doesn't become overwhelmed and can manage, manage the patients. So these are three very different metrics, but they're sort of designed to be, to be breaks for one another in case something unusual happens such as a new variant or, or something, something like that. So we may meet the vaccination metric before we meet the case metric, I think is what I'm trying to communicate.
Okay, but your indication is when we meet all three of them, that we should be able to go maskless as was originally stated. It just may not happen for a little while that we'll meet all three of them for the period of time required. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. And it would be, once we lift, it would be lifting the mandate, it would not be lifting the recommendation to mask indoors. It would simply be lifting the mandate that you must mask indoors.
Understood, thank you. And as far as the CDC map goes, I received text message from a resident who says the CDC map on our site is frozen and has been for a little while. So just if you can pass that on to whomever, that would be great. And my, that was my second question, my second comment. And my third comment is regarding Glaxo and the effectiveness on Omicron. Last I heard, it was about a 71% effectiveness, effectiveness on Omicron and also very much reducing the symptoms, the severity of the symptoms, requiring people not to be hospitalized. Do you have any more current information than that or any other medication that's proving effective against both Omicron and reduction of symptoms?
I, I think I missed the first part of your question, but I will say that with regard to the, the new Omicron variant, we simply don't have enough data yet to say much about how effective are the vaccines, various treatments, severity of disease, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We're just too, too early because, you know, we're less than two weeks' experience with this form of the virus.
Okay, okay. My, my information on Glaxo was, was last night via Bloomberg on its 71% effectiveness in tests. So perhaps information like that will be trickling out this week, but it certainly looks very encouraging, especially on reducing the severity of the symptoms so that people don't need to be hospitalized. And I've said for a long time, if you don't need to be hospitalized, odds are you're not going to die. So I like the direction we're heading. That concludes my questions, doctors and Brian. Board, any other questions for our doctors? No, we've got a motion on the floor and a second, a motion by the VP and a second by me. Any other comments? Seeing none, Jess, a quick roll call, please.
Supervisor Lee.
Aye.
Supervisor Chavez. Supervisor Smitty. Vice President Ellenberg.
Yes.
President Wasserman.
Yes, as well. Thank you very much. All right, and now we're into the home stretch on what is still not a sunny day over here. I hope that some of you have sun shine out your windows. I see Supervisor Chavez taking a look. But over here, it's just a great big cloud. All right, we are now turning to items previously removed from the consent calendar. It was 22, 32, 34 and 59. 22 was pulled by Supervisor Chavez. Some comments or emotion?
Thank you. I'm, I'm happy to, to do that. I, the reason I pulled this off consent is that it's a really large body of work that's been in process for some number of years. And I want to make sure that we can re-energize it with a little bit of focus. And, and so just as a reminder, colleagues, that we put together a joint foster youth task force that was really intent on bringing together all of the community partners to create an efficient and effective and cohesive foster care system that really focused on improving outcomes for children. Within the task force recommendations, there are 29 separate recommendations and a few priorities that the board has given direction, but have not yet gotten traction. And among those includes graduation rates, prioritizing housing and reevaluation of family finding services and a few others. And I understand that the staff has been working and some of these are ongoing. And I, I also recognize that the pandemic really put a lot of strain on all of our agencies. And I'm sure that's had an impact. However, what I would like to just reinforce is that there is a, a robust, comprehensive evaluation component. I think that's the only way we're going to know what is and isn't working in this really dense plan. So what I'd like to ask is if this program come back to children, seniors and families in June with the following recommendations included with plans and work plans to do them. One is an evaluation plan. And if resources are needed for that plan, that, that, that comes forward with an explanation of what those are. Recommended next steps and timeline updated particularly for those items that were prioritized by the committee that includes some that I, that I spoke of earlier. And then the other thing that I'm interested in understanding is whether or not any single item that the, the board and the committee gave direction on are not being fulfilled because of either staffing or funding recommendation or requirements. And, and I would just want to better understand that because I think it would help me at least understand how the staff is prioritizing what particular bodies of work. That's what I would like to make is a motion, but I wanted to do that with the staff. And I thank you all very much for being here to see if there are any thoughts, questions or any concerns about that framework or approach.
Oops, I'm sure they liked what they heard. Am I still muted? No.
You're good, I can hear you now.
I'm good. Okay, thank you. That was a motion Supervisor Chavez.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
And there was a second, thank you. Is there any other comment from the various members we have from the departments, chief chef, the directors, directors, assistant directors, program managers? Or you just want to?
And Daniel and Deborah, either one of you in particular, is that all clear and makes sense? And?
Yeah, Supervisors, Daniel with DFS, that makes sense. Yep.
Yeah, and Supervisors, yes, this is Deborah Porte Usher. It does make sense and we can do that and we'll come back and show. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You very much. So we have a motion by Supervisor Chavez and a second by Supervisor Lee, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. May we please have a roll call vote, Jess?
Supervisor Lee.
Aye.
Supervisor Chavez.
Yes.
Supervisor Smitty.
Aye.
Vice President Ellenberg.
Yes.
President Wasserman.
Yes, thank you very much. We are now moving on to 32 and 34, both in our behavioral health department. And the request to pull 32 with Supervisor Ellenberg or to hear 34 with 32. In either event, 32 and 34, Vice President Ellenberg, you're on.
Thank you so much. Am I off of mute? Yes. Thanks so much to, to staff for, for the report. I recognize this is in response to comments from Supervisors Chavez and Lee at the September FGOC meeting on behavioral health, the BHSD audit. The, and I've got three questions from different places of the report. Information on packet page 816 indicates a wait of about 10 days on average from when a person is ordered by the court to be released into mental health or substance use treatment and when that placement occurs. So first, is it correct that these people wait in jail even though the release to care has already been ordered by the court?
Question of staff. Margaret, Sherry, Rhonda.
Sure, sorry. I think Margaret Obermeyer is going to answer the questions. Go ahead, Margaret.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon Supervisor Allenberg. This is not actually correct, right? There's several moving parts to the process in regards to individuals being released from jail. An entire process could take up to those 10 days, right? And that process really involves the paperwork, the administrative booking, the medications that, that need to be ordered as well as the placement that we're looking for. So it's not necessarily that it's taken those 10 days. It, it could vary, but, but there's several moving parts to it.
But during that time from the court order on, they are waiting in, in jail, however, whether it takes three days or nine days or 10 days. Is that correct?
Yes, for those very. Yes, for those various other pieces to fall in place.
Okay, from, from the waitlist data on packet page 816, it appears that at any point in time approximately 100 people are in jail, and I'll note, receiving care paid for out of the general fund rather than Medi-Cal. And that this may be due, as you were describing, Margaret, to a combination of processing delays and access to, lack of access to slots with behavioral health providers, is that accurate?
So currently, as of today, there, there's 63 folks. And I think you're referencing the jail assessment coordination list, the JAC.
The JAC list.
Yeah, so there's 63 people as of today. And yes, jail is considered a lockout in terms of billing for Medi-Cal. And so services rendered in the jail are not necessary, they're not billable to Medi-Cal. So during the period of time when they are in jail, it is the county general fund that is for all the services rendered.
Right, and the point that I'm trying to make there and just confirm that I'm accurate is that, again, we're talking about the period of time between which the court has ordered them to treatment and the number of days in which they continue to be in our custody until they get into treatment. You mentioned the processing pieces can take up to 10 days. What about accessing slots with our behavioral health providers? Does that cause a delay in someone's release?
No, that is part of the process because during the time when the, the release has been determined, we are looking for slot, we are looking for placement. Sometimes there are slots available. Most of the time, there might, there will be a slot available, but we still need to wait for the medication to be ordered. We still need to wait for administrative booking to take place, and, and that could be some of the delays. So it's not always that it's because there is no slot available for the individual to transition to.
Do we know about what percentage? I, I just not, I, I heard you say it's not always the case that there aren't slots available. Are there slots available 90% of the time when people need it, 50%?
There, there are slots available 90% of the time. I mean, a few times, yes, we've struggled depending on the type of facility or the type of placement. Sometimes those, those could take a little longer than usual, but right now there are slots available.
Thanks, could they ever take longer than the 10 days?
It could, but again, it, it has to do with all the various other factors involved.
Got it, thanks. I'll switch a little bit to another part of the report. In, in attachment three, information on access to substance use treatment slots is provided. And on package, a packet page 824, it states, "One client per room was the strategy adopted to limit COVID-19 exposure in a congregate setting. This reduced the number of individuals that could be placed in the residential program by 50% or more at the largest substance use treatment provider and resulted in increased wait times. Currently, providers are working closely with county public health department and instituting the CDC guidelines to gradually bring their programs up to contracted capacity. And certainly, we're all aware of the need to, to have reduced the populations. Given the dramatic increases in drug overdoses in many communities, and of course, the continuing need to balance COVID risks with other, with risks, with other risks of delays in care, including substance use treatment, how do we resolve to bring our system back to full capacity?"
So Supervisor, I do want to mention that our system is back to capacity. We've instituted biweekly meetings that were going on with Public Health, meetings that were going on with community licensing. And based on those meetings, we were able to resolve some of the concerns that residential providers had over unvaccinated individuals or folks who were COVID positive, who were coming into the facilities. And at this point, with the, with the collaboration with Public Health, we have been able to actually provide ability for individuals who are unvaccinated to be vaccinated at some of our substance use facilities prior to admission. So that would not deter the person from being admitted for substance use services. So there's a lot of work that has been done to, to, to. And we are basically at full capacity back again in our residential programs.
Operating, operating at full capacity back to the pre-COVID standards?
Yes.
Is that what you mean? I would think that it would help us with the goal of reducing the jail population, you know, and that's had this major outbreak, and also addressing other health needs of the residents to be able to move people out of the jail into these facilities where, where it's appropriate. Would there be a, is there a wait time for those placements?
Not at this current time. I mean, we did look back prior to this meeting today, and there are no times.
Okay, wow, good, but this is, this is good to hear, thank you. I go, my last question is also in attachment two on packet page 817. Staff recommends addressing three key gaps in the adult system of care. Outpatient services, slots for intensive services for patients released from jail, and residential care facility services for patients discharging from inpatient care or IMDs. To what extent are these needs addressed by the MHSA annual plan updates that we'll hear at the board next week? Or are separate resources needed to implement these three recommendations?
So we've been working very hard and have been addressed with the MHSA funding. So for instance, on the outpatient side, with the media adjustments, we are adding 200 additional outpatient slots. And we're currently working with the providers who are over capacity to begin to add these slots to their current capacity, current contracts. We've also made some adjustments.
I'm sorry, Margaret, I didn't, I didn't understand. If they are over their current capacity, how can we add slots? Or does it just mean that they're over what we've contracted for, but they still have beds available?
So this is in outpatient services, I'm not referencing to beds at this time, I'm referencing.
You're right, I'm sorry, I mixed them up.
Yeah, to serve individuals who call in through our call center or through, who are seeking services for outpatient.
But I guess the same question applies, but not talking about beds. If, if the providers are already over capacity and we want them to add slots, does it mean that they are over capacity in terms of their workforce? Or just in the number of slots that we have contracted for?
And the number of slots that we have contracted for.
Okay, so if we add more money, expand their contracts, they can serve more people?
They can serve more people, yes.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Thank you. We've also created some flexibility in, in some of the contracts just based on the recommendation that had come up from the board in regards to individuals expanding up outreach and engagement for folks who traditionally don't engage very well. So we have added some information, more support for the providers, right? In terms of the billing and also in terms of activities so that they could continue to provide ongoing outreach and engagement.
I, I, thanks, I really appreciate that. And I, and I'm, I'm thinking that it would be good to beneficial to continue this conversation at the next board meeting when we've, when we are getting a review of the MHSA plan. And really, something that, that I'll be looking for are how we're going to use the dollars and what dollars specifically to, to build up these three identified areas. Outpatient services, slots for intensive services for patients released from jail, and residential care facility services for patients that are discharging from inpatient care or, or IMDs.
Yes, and even for those being released from the jail, we do intend to use the MHSA funding to increase capacity in that intensive outpatient program. We're going to be adding 11 slots there. Full service partnership, we're about to add 50 slots. Transitional housing, 20, and crisis residential. With the additional front end from DHCS, our state hospital, we will be adding 24 more slots.
So all of this, I'll just wrap up by saying, all of this really is exciting news. I want to, you know, be able to see this happening in real time, to know that we are allocating sufficient dollars. We have been spending more and more money, which I think is important, but we need to make sure that impacts from those dollars are recognized by not having waiting lists, by having fewer people either languishing in our jails or languishing on, on the streets who, who would benefit from, from these services, all of which are covered by their Medi-Cal, right? Outside of the jail. Thanks again so much, Margaret, I really appreciate the, the dialogue.
Thank you, Vice President. Those 105 slots coming, Margaret, are, are very exciting indeed. We have more hands from Supervisors. Before I turn to Supervisors, Lily and Supervisor Chavez. Supervisor Ellenberg, you picked these two items basically off the consent calendar.
I actually pulled, Supervisor, President Wasserman, I pulled 32, and I believe Supervisor Chavez added 34, so I don't have comments on 34.
Okay, and 32 is simply receive report, which is not an action item, so we don't need any vote on that. Supervisor Lee, your hand up was up before Supervisor Chavez. Did you wish to speak on either 32 or 34?
Yes, on 32, may I? Thank you very much. So we have quite a few different high intensity programs providing these proactive outreach engagement like ACT, FACT, the IFSP, right? Lots of alphabet soup here. Now, based on what we, I can try to understand from the report, the total number of clients that's contracted for, for IFSP was 955. We've served 693.
I thought it was.
I think there's a hot mic.
Somebody's got a.
Thank you.
Hot mic, but it's not this mic.
All right.
Okay, go ahead Supervisor Lee.
Thank you. So basically, what this shows me is that we have less number of clients being served than was contracted for, which is 693 out of 955 this past year. However, for the FACT program, looks like all 125 spots that have been contracted has been served. So just wanted to see if we need to contract more for the FACT program? And how is that related to the additional spot that we talked about earlier?
Go to share.
So Supervisor Lee, yeah, we might have, we, we have served more than the contracted capacity. But when we look at the other aspects of the contracts, we, we are not over capacity in that regards. So for instance, when you look at the hours of services, the way services are designed, we're not over capacity in that regard. So we still have capacity to serve individuals in the, in the fact.
Fact program, right? So I just want to make sure that you have enough. If not, please come back and let us know so the board can allocate more funding if necessary to make sure that people don't get turned away from these programs. That's my biggest concern. Now, on the length of stay on these different programs, ACT is the longest, 14 and a half months. IFSP is 12 months, FACT is nine months. Leave me on these numbers. Can you tell me, are these good numbers, bad numbers, or how are we doing?
We're doing great, actually. These are good numbers. It just shows that we're serving individuals based on their needs and not either holding them too long or holding them too less. So depending on the individual's needs is how they're moving along in these programs.
Okay, and substance abuse, of course, is one of those issues. I failed to find, but how many substance abuse beds do we have generally for these programs? Are these all part of it?
We have various different beds. It depends on which specific one. So withdrawal management, we have, hold on a second, let me look at that. I, I mean, we can provide you that information, I don't have it at the top of my.
Yeah, sure. Apologize, I just asked this earlier. Yeah. Yeah, if you could help me, provide me some substance abuse, substance abuse reduction program we have and the number of beds in these different programs, I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Sounds good, thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Chavez.
Thank you, and I, I know that we're going to have a chance to dive into this too next week, but I, what I wanted to say is that I, I'm having a hard time remedying what I'm seeing in this report with what my experience has been in trying to get people into services. And so what, what I'm really wanting to better understand, and I'm just going to choose one topic just because it might help me process this. If we go to packet page 816, and we look at the crisis residential line, and, and I could use either one of these, but we have this crisis residential line. It says access within 10 days not applicable. And does that mean that it's not legally applicable?
Well, it's not that it, crisis is on a same-day basis and individuals, they can access crisis the moment they need it. That's the difference. This access within 10 days is, it's not going through a call center, for instance. The way these, these referrals are processed are directly to, to the provider.
So the wait time, the 9.6 days wait time?
It's from the time when a referral has been sent to the, to the facility, between that time to when the individual actually enters the facility or is admitted. Could take up to 10 days.
So what, and then we have a 24-person waitlist.
Yes, I do want to remind the Supervisor that this was a report that was sent to you in June when we had the pandemic and that this wait time, as I had mentioned to Supervisor Ellenberg, is no longer applicable.
So one, what I would have hoped is that, I realize these were old reports that, that are now coming to the full board. I think, just given the high level of interest, that my expectation would have been that these would be updated. So that, that's kind of my first concern. And my second is though, just to go back to this number, are, are we now saying there's no wait time for crisis residential?
We're saying, yes, that the wait time, there might still be a wait time, but it's not up to nine days. And if, and the wait time also could be because the individual has to get all the necessary pre-admission paperwork and all the necessary pre-admission labs and all of that before admission. So regardless of, even if there's a bed today, there still may be one or two days lag time. That, that's what I'm trying to say here.
Yeah, I think what I would just suggest is that if, given the dramatic difference that it appears that there is from June to now, that I think it would be helpful to have these updated numbers. And I don't want to wait for another June. And the reason is that, you know, my office communicates actually with you all often because we have folks who are somewhere in the process. And my, my experience is that we're still having, that we have impacted programs. And I'm really excited and will learn more next Tuesday. That may, that may soften some of my, my questions and concerns. So I'll look forward to seeing that report. But I think that this, that this really needs to be, you know, on, online somewhere with a very up-to-date, as up-to-date as we can have on, on how many service, service slots are, whether those are beds or appointments. as up-to-date as we can have on how many service slots are, whether those are beds or appointments, and then how long people are waiting to access them, so that we just better understand where there are kinks in the chain. I also recognize that we don't have a uniform way of communicating. So I realize that it's not that every single institution we're interacting with, that we have an interface. I know we're working to get there. But I think that absent, absent having an interim strategy, it's going to be very difficult to know what to invest in along the continuum. And Dr. Smith, I see your hand, so I'd love to get your insight, and then I'll go on with the rest of my questions.
We're going to turn to Dr. Attorney Supervisor CEO Smith.
Who's that? Okay. Well, I just wanted to make an overall comment and suggestion about what we've been talking about from an administrative perspective. The continuum of care for behavioral health is extremely complex and confusing, to say the least. The funding sources are all split up into different programs, and the availability of those programs varies from time to time. And the particular programs that an individual client is qualified for change on a regular basis. And so we've been struggling trying to figure out how we can explain this in a better, more comprehensive way, and also address the concerns that the board has raised about places in our continuum of care, which might need more funding, more supplies, more focus. And I think that the best way for us to do this is probably with a fairly extended workshop-type model, maybe our first meeting of January, where we can go through the entire continuum of care, you know, pull out what types of clients are appropriate for what types of services, how long those services last, what the limits are for those services, and the entire database, so that we have clarity that we're all, as you said, supervisors, speaking the same language and talking about the same thing. Because, you know, I'm very concerned that, you know, we make sure that we have a continuum of care that provides all the services that we need. But we really have to lay it all out in one particular meeting. So I know we're going to talk on next Tuesday about MHSA, but again, that's only one part of the system. I'm sure there will still be questions about other parts of the system, how it interacts with jail mental health, how it interacts with clinical medical health, or mental health, lots of other questions. So I'm just suggesting, and I hope it'll be okay with the board, that we schedule an actual workshop for probably three or four hours on a particular day in January, where we can go from bottom to top, soup to nuts, go over everything in general, and tell you where we think augmentation needs to occur, and where we think we have strength, and where we think we have measurement criteria that will be useful.
You know, Dr. Smith, I think you made that recommendation at FGOC, too. I think it's a really, really good idea. And part of the reason I was diving into this now is that when I saw this on consent, I thought maybe that this was the beginning of that process. So I think you're right, Dr. Smith. I think that's absolutely the right way to go. I also recognize that it's such a confusing, it is such a confusing need to, I mean, it is really confusing. And the other thing I would just add is that, you know, in these reports, and I would actually include 32, 33, and 34 in this, there's such little analysis in it that it's hard to, it's hard to understand what the takeaways are beyond the numbers. And so I think that would be super helpful. Just to, so yes, I say yes to that, and we'll include it in the motion for 32 and 34. Just to go to 34 for a moment. We, one of the things that was fascinating to me, looking at this report, was realizing that we have throughout the county approximately 340 locked beds. And in previous discussions with staff, we had been talking about the, how many locked beds we had, and then the expansion relative to, you know, doing some, frankly, some expansion as part of our budget. And Sheri, I don't know if the additional 40 beds are realized in this, or 30 beds are realized in item 34's numbers. Do you know the answer to that?
So item 30, these 40 beds for Institute of Mental Disease, these, item 34 is really referenced in inpatient hospitals. It's a different type of care.
So these aren't IMD beds?
No.
So just so I understand this, the number that, the IMD number, what is that number?
For the IMD beds, at this time, I could get that number for you, but we currently run out 216 to 240 beds.
And is that 240, is that with the increase of the 40 beds that the board just funded?
Yes, we've been able to move several individuals from inpatient BAP, who have been waiting for.
For those beds? And so these beds that I, just to help me understand the distinction, what are these beds called if they're not IMD beds?
So these are called inpatient hospital beds. So these are beds that, if an individual is put under 5150 out in the community, they go into an inpatient hospital. So it could be an emergency psychiatric hospital, right, which is like EPS. It could be that they're going into a crisis stabilization unit, if it's a locked setting. Or they could be going into one of our general acute hospitals that has a psychiatric component to it, or psychiatric health facility. So there are four different types of inpatient hospitalization. And that's the first step towards hospitalization, right? Now, based on the 5150 evaluation or clinical assessment by the psychiatrist, the individual may now deemed needing further stabilization, right? So the 5150 is now converted to a 5250, right? And that's when the individual is now placed in another, maybe another crisis stabilization unit, which could be like Barbara Ehren's Pavilion, or continued stay in one of the psychiatric health facilities.
So these numbers do not include BAP?
These numbers do not include BAP, no. But it includes.
So the Valley Medical Center beds that are here, that says Santa Clara Valley Medical Center, 50 beds, what are those?
So that is BAP, sorry.
Okay, so what's, okay, so what's confusing about what you just said, Margaret, is exactly that. So these beds, I know some are adult, some are youth, some are 5150, some are 5250. Yes?
Yeah, well, no, they all start out as 5150, right?
No, I understand that. But Margaret, what I still don't understand from looking at this is I don't understand capacity. So I understand, so this designation I'm supportive of, I think you all are doing a good job of screening and really managing this body of work. So I'm not, that's not what my issue is. My issue is that this document has relatively little information for a very big authority. It's not broken down by youth or adults. And it's not clear to me the full scope of the capacity here as we're giving. So as an example, my understanding is that when we're using a 5250 hold, that that's an extension of only two weeks on average. So what I don't know is how many of these beds have people living in them or staying in them longer than that two-week period? And if what you're saying is none of them do, because this is the emergency network that we have, is that what you're saying?
So what I'm saying is, item 34 that is coming to you is to designate these hospitals to be able to accept individuals who are put under 5150.
I understand that, yes.
Yeah. And so that's the first process towards further stabilization, which may result to an IMD placement. I don't know if that helps explain it better for you.
No, because, but I understand, Margaret, I do understand the point you're raising. And rather than, I guess what I would just say is, when we have our meeting in January, I think what is not transparent, and it may be to you all, because you all live in this world, is what are the resources and assets available that we are using to support people along the continuum of services, but in particular in crisis and in SMI? Because again, what also isn't included here, which I hope we'll see in January, is the, the, well, is the, is, like, you just talked a little bit earlier about the engagement process that we're using. And while I know verbally that contracts have been changed, I still don't know what is the expectation of our nonprofit partners to engage people who are seriously mentally ill? And then how does this network, how is it structured in a way that can be supportive of those engagements? Since the engagement work, it appears to me was, or was intended to be for those who are on the more serious end of need. So from looking at all of this, I don't, I can't digest that and explain it to anybody, not even myself. So.
Can I jump in?
Yes, please. Dr. Smith, please.
See if I can use my limited skills of translating medicine into real people talk. 34 is actually an authorization to designate certain facilities as able to take care of LPS patients. It doesn't actually mean that the beds have to be used, or we're not saying that the beds will necessarily be used. The way the state law is written, the local public health officer, I mean, mental health officer has to designate certain facilities as qualified, you know, certified to be able to accept LPS patients. So they could come in on a 5150 or 5250, or they could be transferred from someplace where they already are. So it really is just a certification-type process, rather than actually saying we're going to fill those beds necessarily.
I totally understand that. The only point I was trying to make, as I read the report, I get that we're blessing that. The only point I was trying to raise is that, from all of the documents that I've received over the years, that I've been reading the Behavioral Health Department materials, that when you look at a document like that, it's so high-level that it's unclear how many of them are for youth, how many of them are for adults? Do we have enough of them? And I understand the point that you're raising about the purpose of that item. But when I was reading, getting ready for the board meeting, I was looking at both items 32, I'm sorry, 33, I'm sorry, 33, 34, 32, 33, and 34, and recognizing that, even though I've been reading all these materials, I can't distinguish the opportunity for capacity. That's really all the point I was making. And if, when this comes back to us, we can make sure that the entire system is represented, so that it's very clear what the capacity options are, it would just be helpful when we have the bigger discussion, as you referenced earlier. That's really what I was trying to understand. Thank you.
I get it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, I'm done. Thank you.
Mike, you're muted.
I'm working on it. All right. Thank you.
It is. Thanks so much. I just want to make a request, Dr. Smith. When the workshop happens in January, and I did see President Wasserman's eyes roll back when you said three or four hours, what I want to make very sure of is that it's not just an academic class. Yes, we all want to understand the system, but since our job is policy and budget direction, what I would like to see from that workshop are analyses of where the gaps and the bottlenecks are, and your best recommendations for how to fix them, so that we, as supervisors, have something to do, other than just be generally smarter people and well-versed on the mental health system. Does that make sense, to make sure that that's actionable?
Sure, sure it does, and we'll definitely do that. I just think there's some basic information we need to get to the public to understand what's going on, because there's all these, I mean, fundamentally, in California, our behavioral health system is not designed to be easily understood. And that was an intentional decision made by the legislature many years ago. So it's really hard to understand, because it was designed not to be understood.
I appreciate that, and I'm not, we don't need to, we do need to understand it, but for an end.
Right, exactly. We'll definitely do that.
Thank you so much.
Any other hands wishing to go up? I want to thank Deborah, and Margaret, and Moretta, and Sheri for being here for the last hour and sharing your knowledge with us. And frankly, I learned how much I don't know in this time that we just spent. And I look forward to the workshop and learning what I can. We have no members of the public wishing to speak on these items. We do need a motion. Supervisor Chavez, I believe you made a motion. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'll move to, yeah, I'll move to give the staff the delegation of authority with the request that the information on capacity be included in the study that we have in January.
Thank you. And Supervisor Ellenberg. And Dr. Smith, before we take the roll call vote, I just want to thank you for hiring such intelligent, hard-working people, as I see on my screen today, that understand the complexities of something you called, said was created not to be understood by Joe Public. I, too, want to understand it better. At the end of the day, though, I am going to very much rely on the highly intelligent experts that I just named a few minutes ago, to give us a recommendation on what best to do. And then between them and you, find a place, find the funding to help do what it is that we want to do. And I thank all of you for your passion. We have a motion, we have a second. Jess, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Lee?
Hi.
Supervisor Chavez?
Yes.
Supervisor Semidion?
Hi.
Vice President Ellenberg?
Yes.
President Wasserman?
Yes, as well. Thank you very much. And Jess, I'm going to take us to what I consider our final item of the day, item number 59, pulled from consent by Supervisor Chavez. Do you agree?
I do agree.
Thank you very much. And it's simply a receiver report. Supervisor Chavez, you have some additional comments or perhaps a motion?
Yes, I wanted to ask this question, and Dr. Smith, I apologize. I'm going to put you a little on the hot seat here for just a minute. So O'Klem did this report on custody health. And as part of the O'Klem designation, we included custody health as a body of work. With Harvey Rose, we have a process when an audit happens. There's a pretty robust process about review and how that gets reviewed, and when it comes back to the board for final action. And my question is, since this is. for final action. And my question is, since this is, I think, one of the first reviews we've had. Do you, Dr. Smith and, and James and Michael, have you all talked about a process? And for example, when does and how does custody health not just report back, but demonstrate that the changes have been implemented?
Supervisor, this is Miguel Marquez. Dr. Smith had a step boy just for a couple of minutes. I don't know if he's engaged in those discussions. I'm not aware that we have. But certainly we could develop a process, you know, so that we could report back appropriately to the board as we implement those issues.
What I would like to recommend is that we receive this report, but have this report come back in January, February, when that, when that system has been agreed upon between Michael and the CEO and, you know, your office, Miguel. Because I think that we're, we need a very consistent process. The departments need to know what's expected of them. And like I said, this was the first one. So I, I realize it's it's newish, maybe not the first, but one of the first ones. But I am really interested in something that's, that's just structured that we all understand. So I'll move to receive the report and have in the January, February timeframe, the response back from custody health, along with what the process is that Dr. Smith, that you and Michael want to present to the board. That would be my motion.
We have a motion. I'm looking for a second.
A second?
I have a second. I've got a second. We have no members of the public on this either. Just roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Lee?
Hi.
Supervisor Chavez?
Yes.
Supervisor Semidian?
Hi.
Vice President Ellenberg?
Yes.
President Wasserman?
Yes. Thank you very much for that. Jess, you confirmed earlier that was the last item we have. So I will adjourn this meeting to next Tuesday, December fourteenth with a nine thirty start time. If there's no objections or hands raised. All right, everybody. Have a good rest of your afternoon. Bye bye.
Thanks, Jeff. Bye.
Recording stopped.
The Zoom room will now be closing. Thank you.